We will call a meeting to order, 6:03, January 25th, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Good evening, everybody. We'll begin, as we always do, with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And for public audience tonight, we received one email, which I will read. It's from Joan Coe. And it goes like this. During the January 14th, 2021 Personnel Subcommittee Meeting, Deputy First Selectman Sean Ascom challenged Town Manager Maria Capriola's abuse of power when Town Manager Maria Capriola was setting policy by usurping the powers of the Board of Selectmen. Deputy First Selectman Sean Ascom reminded Town Manager Maria Capriola that the Board of Selectmen sets policy and the Town Manager Maria Capriola implements the policy. Does this also apply to picture attachments to the Board of Selectmen comments read aloud by the selectmen during a public audience at the agenda? The Board of Selectmen had shown the attached pictures when reading comments for months, until Town Manager Maria Capriola decided to set a policy that the selectmen will not show pictures, another abuse of power, according to Deputy Selectman Sean Ascom. I asked to allow pictures to be shown to the public during the televised Board of Selectmen meetings. Has Town Manager Maria Capriola once again changed the policy as the Board of Selectmen without the approval of the Board of Selectmen? Where is the indignation from the members of the Board of Selectmen? It's interesting to note that the Town Manager Maria Capriola accepts picture attachments sent through emails. I recently sent Tom Tbersky, Recreation Director, a picture of an ongoing problem, since the irrigation system several years ago was installed at the golf course. The water from the golf course runs through the tennis courts to the parking area below the tennis courts and ices up on cold days, creating a dangerous issue. Tom Tbersky said that this is an ongoing problem and we continue to seek a long-term fix. Since this is a dangerous issue, why hasn't it been solved? At the January 11th, 2021 Board of Selectmen, I reviewed the police vandalized footlocker investigation. That was inconclusive. All the officers were interviewed under the guarantee warning that all the officers swore to tell the truth. Lieutenant Siffo conducted the investigation under the orders of Chief Bolter. Lieutenant Siffo interviewed an alleged boyhood friend, Sergeant Feeble, among others. Chief Bolter asked Sergeant Crits to also make some inquiries. Crits said that everyone he spoke to was cooperative and denied involvement, except for Sergeant Feeble. Crits said that Sergeant Feeble instantly turned red in the face, used profanities, and stormed out of the room. Has Chief Bolter considered Sergeant Feeble's reaction to the inquiry that of an innocent individual? Since Chief Bolter fired Sergeant Tromboli for being untruthful, stating all police officers should tell the truth, why has this red flag not been reinvestigated? One of the officers interviewed by Lieutenant Siffo lied. Why hasn't Chief Bolter been aggressive in his quest to find the officer that lied? Is this an application of prosecutorial discretion? How many other investigations have been inconclusive, leading to less scrutiny? Can a police department call an alleged homicide as suicide with less scrutiny? Case closed? According to Sergeant Corcoran, the only sergeant who has not said anything in regards to this incident, even when the conversation had been had in his presence, was allegedly Sergeant Feeble. Sergeant Corcoran stated, "Again, we are all trained observers in this profession, and Sergeant Feeble's reaction was not someone who is innocent." Sergeant Feeble's testimony under oath is inconsistent with other reports. Sergeant Feeble's testimony states that he had no knowledge as to who dumped garbage into the footlocker. It's alleged that Sergeant Feeble's footlocker is in close proximity to where the garbage was dumped. Why has Chief Bolter, after receiving the footlocker investigation, did not see the red flags and try to pursue the truth? What does Chief Bolter's actions of selective enforcement do to the morale of the police department? Although I asked the Town Manager Maria Capriola to review my allegations, nothing has been done. Deputy First Selectman Sean Ascom is the liaison to the police department, and he has not followed up on my allegations. Lieutenant Siffo stated that this investigation can be reopened at any time. Since Deputy Chief Chris Davis has had many years of experience with investigations within and outside of police departments, perhaps he can reopen the footlocker investigation and get to the truth. Another issue in the report was the use of chewing tobacco and dip spit in a cup that was dumped into the footlocker that damaged the boots. We now have COVID-19 with all restrictions as to using masks not to transfer bodily fluids from one individual to another. And yet, police officers can spit in the cup and throw the liquid in the garbage, which can contaminate the custodians who toss the garbage into the containers and leave some particles in confined spaces where anyone can get contaminated. Is Chief Bolter concerned about police officers using chewing tobacco and the health issues associated with the dip spit? All of my comments and pictures will be posted on Simsberry Patch, Twitter, @JoanCo, and on Facebook. I wanted to see if there was anyone who was joining our meeting live tonight, or if that concludes public audience. Okay. So anyone who does want to join public audience live, they can reach out to Tom Fitzgerald ahead of time, just to get the Zoom link and register. His email is tfitzgerald@simsberry-ct.gov. And you can also send written comments to Erica Butler, ebutler@simsberry-ct.gov. We have a presentation tonight. It came to my attention, thank you, Mike Payne, that we have a resident of Simsberry, a longtime resident, who is celebrating her 100th birthday on February 2nd. And has prepared a proclamation, which I'll read, and then I'll open it up to members of the board who may want to share any reflections. Whereas longevity of life is a blessing for an individual and a community, which benefits from the knowledge, creativity, and experience this individual brings to all. And whereas the town of Simsberry recognizes with respect and admiration the contribution of senior citizens to our community. And whereas Ms. Ruth Schwartz, Simsberry resident of more than 50 years, celebrates her 100th birthday on February 2nd, 2021. And whereas Ms. Schwartz loves to play bridge and would play every day of the week if she could. She is an avid baker, and the smell of freshly baked bread washes from her home. And whereas Ms. Schwartz has a background in science, she's lived in several countries and enjoys traveling to Germany to see her family. And whereas Ms. Schwartz worked at McLean's for more than 30 years, happily greeting visitors, staff, and residents. And now therefore, I, Eric Wellman, First Selectman of Simsberry, Connecticut, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, do hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure to celebrate Ruth Schwartz for her long life on the occasion of her 100th birthday, and wishing her many more. Okay. I wanted to, again, Ms. Schwartz, wish you the happiest of birthdays. And I wanted to see if anyone on the board wanted to share any reflections.
Excuse me, Erica. I witnessed, Mike Payne. I happen to have known the Schwartz family for a long time. Her son, Arno, actually worked with me and rode with me on the crew team. And graduated high school with Arno. And knew the family. It was, I was humbled to say that I haven't talked to her in a while, but same point, I'm amazed and really pleased that she's going to have a birthday next year, and she'll be 100. That is beyond wonderful. And please want her to know how pleased I am to have met her, to know her, and wish her nothing but the best and many more years of enjoyment.
Thank you, Mike. It's great. Is there anything else anyone wanted to share?
Just happy birthday.
Happy birthday. All right. That is our only presentation tonight. I'm going to move on now to the First Selectmen's report, and then followed by the Town Manager's report. First, some important information on vaccination process. Currently, we're in Phase 1B of Connecticut's COVID-19 vaccine rollout. And 1B is divided into three tiers. Vaccines for people over the age of 75, 75 and older, are being scheduled now. Scheduling is likely to begin early next month for people 65 to 74. And then frontline essential workers and people with underlying medical conditions are likely to be scheduled in late February, early March. Now, over the next couple of weeks, we'll be getting more clarity around who qualifies as a frontline essential worker. And also, we'll have a list of qualified, a list of underlying medical conditions that also qualify. The latest information from the state of Connecticut, they maintain a COVID-19 vaccination page, which I link to in the report that will be emailed out tomorrow. Registration for those who qualify in Phase 1B is through the website ct.gov/covidvaccine. If you don't have internet access, you can call Connecticut's COVID Vaccine Appointment Assistance Line. That number is 877-918-2224. The town has also received numerous calls and emails from residents who found the process for scheduling a vaccine confusing. Our senior center and social services department is prepared to assist. Please call them at 860-658-3273 if you or someone you know needs assistance with this process. And I can tell you, from assisting or working with members of my own family, it is a confusing process. And don't hesitate to reach out to our senior center if we can be of assistance. I wanted to give an update on the budget process. So the town's annual budget process has just begun. The Board of Finance has given both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education guidance of a 1.5% increase over last year's operating budget. This no doubt will be challenging, with fixed costs in the range of about 3% for both boards. A couple of dates that I wanted to put on the radar. Our Town Manager Maria Capriola will present her proposed budget to the Board of Selectmen on February 22nd. And then on March 6th, which is a Saturday, the Board of Selectmen holds its all-day budget workshop, where we will review the budget, department by department. As always, I encourage our residents to be engaged in the budget process. You can reach out to myself or any member of the Board of Selectmen if you have questions or wanted to share your priorities. You can also participate in public audience at the beginning of any of our meetings by reaching out to Erica Butler, ebutler@simsberry-ct.gov. The Simsberry Loan Locker is celebrating its one-year anniversary. The Loan Locker lends durable medical equipment free of charge. It's operating out of the Apple Barn at Simsberry Farms. And the Loan Locker had about 118 appointments just in the last three months. So it's really gratifying to hear that members of our community are using it. Anyone looking to borrow equipment, or if you're interested in making a donation, you can call 860-658-3224. Or you can send an email to simsberylonelocker@gmail.com. And also, they're always looking for people who are interested in getting involved as a volunteer. So you can reach out. Next, in the Spirit Council's Let's Talk series is a roundtable discussion on affordable housing. I'll be joined by Deputy First Selectman Sean Ascom, Bill Rice, Chair of the Planning Commission, Dr. Susan Eaton, Professor of Practice in Social Policy, and Anika Singh Lamar, Clinical Professor of Law at Yale. That discussion starts at 6:30 PM. And to receive the Zoom link, please register on the library's website. Also, Community for Care, in partnership with the library, is hosting a panel discussion on domestic violence. Join us for a panel of experts as they discuss how to locate resources, the effects of COVID-19, and how to develop a safety plan. That, you can also register for that on the library's website as well. That's taking place early next month. I'll turn it over now to Maria for the Town Manager's report.
Hey, thanks, Erica. Good evening, everyone. First, an update on our pandemic response. We are still currently at red alert status for the purposes of the state's municipal COVID alert system. Over the most recent two-week period, we had about 28.3 cases per 100,000 residents. That's down very, very slightly from the previous two-week period, which was 29.2 cases. Our positivity rate for those people being tested also came down slightly. And our positivity rate was 4.3% over the most recent two-week period. And we had 99 positive cases during that duration as well. So relatively stable, still high, relatively speaking. But again, relatively stable and flat over the last two-week period. Something I did want to mention and point out tonight. The Health District is seeing a recent trend through various contact tracing efforts. And it's that individuals who are experiencing very mild symptoms that seem like a cold, such as a little bit of, you know, a runny nose, a little bit of congestion, just a little bit of a sore throat, folks are thinking their COVID case is actually just cold. So they're not staying home. And many of them are not being tested. But then it does, in fact, turn out to be COVID and to be a positive case. So they are trying their best to remind folks that if you are experiencing any cold-like symptoms at all, to please stay home, please get tested. We are trying to help the Health District with getting that information out to the public and that reminder. So we did share some information recently on social media about that. The Health District is also continuing to provide vaccination clinics, some of which are here in town. They held two clinics last week and vaccinated 350 individuals. Their focus at this time does remain on people aged 75 or older, per state directives. A small number of our staff members were eligible to receive the vaccine under Phase 1A. Our staff members who respond to medical calls for service were offered the vaccine at that time. We do think that some of our staff members may be eligible under Phase 1B and the frontline essential worker classification. However, we don't have specificity around what that will look like yet. And we hope to know more in the coming weeks. Our workforce during the month of January has remained relatively healthy. We have had six staff members that were quarantined for coming into contact with someone who had tested positive, both at work and in a non-work setting. And this month, we've had one staff member who tested positive. We do continue to offer walk-in hours for both the Town Hall and Library. So we're continuing to do so at Town Hall on Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings, and at the library, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturdays midday, and scheduling appointments for individuals during other hours of our normal hours of operation. I just want to provide a quick update. The social services staff continues to do a fantastic job with our volunteers in providing our monthly food program to folks experiencing food insecurity. And at our most recent distribution, we served 134 households. We gave out 41 bags of kid-friendly food. We provided 96 boxes of food that were given to us by the Salvation Army. And we delivered 26 homebound individuals and families. Again, that program, we are able to do that based on donations we receive from the community. So a great amount of thanks to our community for your continued generosity, so we can offer that program. And one more quick update under our pandemic response. I do want to remind folks that we are accepting applications until January 31st for your January installment of Taxes Due. And the program that's available is the Property Tax Deferral Program for those taxpayers who have been affected by the pandemic. The interest rate reduction program does not require an application. And we have a link in the Town Manager's report for the application if someone is interested in applying for the Property Tax Deferral Program. Moving on to department news and notes. A big round of congratulations to Lieutenant Tom Sheehan. He is actually going to be retiring at the end of this month. He joined our department in 1994 as a patrol officer. He worked his way up to sergeant and later to lieutenant. He attended the Southern Police Institute Command Officer Development Course while he was with us. He has just been a fantastic asset for this community. I can't speak highly enough of his work ethic, his dedication. I've truly enjoyed working with him, getting to know him. I wish him all the best. The town of Rocky Hill is getting a fantastic employee. And just want to share our congratulations to Tom. And from Public Works, happy to announce a promotion of Reed Byers. He was recently promoted to our Fleet Maintenance Supervisor. Reed has been with us since January of 2013. He has a long history of providing excellent service on all of our equipment and vehicles. He's also been responsible for managing all of our police department vehicles for many years, so making sure that they are in good shape to be on the road and do what they need to do. He has excellent strengths in record-keeping and making good decisions around vehicle repairs and replacements. He also has welding and metal fabricating skills, which is just phenomenal. This allows us to do a lot of maintenance and house that we would otherwise need to contract out. We're really excited to see him grow and to move into this opportunity. I just, again, also really enjoy getting to know Reed. He's just a wonderful, again, another wonderful asset to our community and our organization. So congratulations to him. And that concludes our report this evening.
Thank you, Maria. We are going to move on to selectman action tonight. Item A is a grant opportunity through the library. The American Library Association offers grants to libraries to fund various kinds of programming. And the library is partnering with the Simsberry Spirit Council to hopefully hold a multicultural festival in June of 2022 at the Performing Arts Center. And this grant application will be for $2,000. I know we have Lisa with us from the library. I wanted to see if there was anything you wanted to add.
I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the library and the Spirit Council to partner on an event that will benefit the entire community. And it's great that this grant opportunity is available to help defray some of the costs for that event. We're looking forward to working with the Spirit Council.
Great. Thanks, Lisa. Any questions from the board? Okay. Sarah motion effective is January 25, 2021, to submit an application for an American Library Association Libraries Transform Grant, the amount of $2,000 to fund a multicultural festival once the grant materials have been prepared and completed. And also to accept the American Library Association Libraries Transform Grant and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all the documents related to the grant, should it be awarded.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Item B is another grant opportunity, this one through the Senior Center. This would assist senior centers in helping defray some costs associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. So providing reimbursement to senior centers for purchases that are directly associated with COVID preparedness and response. If the grant were awarded in full, it would be $2,500. I wanted to see if there was any additional context that staff wanted to provide. I would just say kudos on finding this opportunity.
Thank you, Eric. We're excited about it. And we also wanted to make sure to let you know that we worked with finance to ensure that the expenses that we're seeking reimbursement for through this grant have not been paid for from any other repayment entity, if you will. And we're also looking forward to adding, hopefully, some new things to our senior center. Really excited about the possibility of being able to purchase some outdoor heaters that will help us with our weekly outdoor food distribution for the seniors for their hot lunch on Wednesdays. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to receive the grant, and we're looking forward to the opportunity.
Right. Thanks, Chris. And any questions from the board? Sarah motion effective is January 25, 2021, to submit an application for the Connecticut Senior Center Project CARES Act Funding Opportunity Grant to help offset senior center expenditures related to providing service during the COVID-19 pandemic once the grant materials have been prepared and completed. And also to accept the grant and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all documents related to the grant, should it be awarded.
I'll move that.
Second.
Monday, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 That motion carries. Item C is a request from the Spirit Council. Currently, the Spirit Council is using Facebook and Twitter to promote its programs and its work. And the request tonight is to add Instagram to their social media repertoire. Kristen, I know we don't have any direct members of Spirit on the line. Is there any other context you'd want to share?
Only that I know that Spirit Council is really excited to add this to their toolbox. They've been working really hard, as you all know, to do the great work that's been set before them in the community. And they actually have a lot of traction on Facebook. They've got a lot of followers. So I think that this is going to be beneficial to them and their mission. Thank you.
Any questions from the board on this?
No, but I just have a quick suggestion. So you guys came before we approved the Facebook, right? Did we do Twitter separately? So maybe, maybe next time somebody asks for social media, we should ask if they want, like, which ones they want, so we could do it all in one shot.
I was also thinking that if...
For the future.
If, isn't, I lose track of this, but isn't Instagram owned by Facebook? So perhaps you've already approved Instagram, but who knows?
Yeah, it's the same thing.
It is owned by them, yeah.
But you know what? Anything we can do to give the Spirit Council additional press and publicity is worthwhile.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you for, thanks for coming back. And there's a lot of good work to promote. Is it a motion effective January 25, 2021, to approve the creation of the Simsberry Spirit Council Instagram account to be used by the committee to publicize their efforts, of which town staff will have oversight?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? All right. That motion passes unanimously. Item D is a referral to the Open Space Committee. A little bit of background on this. PA 490 allows farms, forest, and open space land to be assessed at a very different rate, often a much lower rate than fair market rate for the purposes of collecting property taxes. Currently, there's no policy that the town has that outlines specific criteria for which properties qualify. And staff is recommending a referral to the Open Space Committee to work on a policy that would then come back to this board for review and approval. I wanted to see if there was any additional context, Maria, that you wanted to provide.
Thanks. I'll just offer a few comments and then see if Mike or Francine would like to add anything as well. But I do want to thank and give credit to Francine for discovering this issue for us. You know, and doing her due diligence and being new to her role as the assessor, you know, was looking for our specific PA 490 criteria. We did find some documentation. Documentation was quite old, dated to around 1974. But couldn't really find anything more recent. And so what we are hoping to accomplish and achieve is to develop some specific criteria for properties that could be eligible under PA 490. And right now, you know, what essentially we have is that our POCD that was adopted does reference supporting a PA 490 program. The Board of Selectmen did adopt the POCD as well through a resolution. But again, we do feel that it's important to sort of develop this more detailed criteria. And the Planning Commission took a look at the matter very recently and had hoped to receive some guidance from the Board of Selectmen. And at a staff level, we really felt that we currently have an Open Space Committee work group that has been just phenomenal.[1663.35] We've got a couple of dynamos, Marjorie Winters and Susan Messina, who have been helping us out with just a number of policies and procedures related to our open spaces and our agricultural lands. So our thought was perhaps refer it to that work group to, again, try to develop some criteria that we could all take a look at. Mike or Francine, would you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, sure. Hello, everyone. So this is specific to open space under the Public Act 490. Farm and forest, there are already guidelines out there and we have to follow what those are based on the program. Only the open space is where the towns need to come up with guidelines and decide if it's a program that they want to, you know, offer to their residents. So that's where I'm looking for guidelines. So it's open space and it's perfect that you already have a group that oversees open space and other terms. So that would be great, just clarifying exactly where in the town and, you know, specifics to square acreage that would be eligible zoning and a rate. So, and I can help, you know, further with other questions.
Thank you. Is there guidance that's provided from the state on on how these, you know, kinds of parcels are defined? Like what would the work group be working with?
It's really, it's up to the town. They do come up with a use assessment that we can look at. But it's more towards farming and forest. There are other towns that already have the program enacted. And so what we need to clarify is where in the town, which zones, which neighborhoods, do you want to open this up? So for example, some towns have, their requirements are, just to give an example of how they work this up. If the neighborhood, this zone, is a two-acre zone for a home and the owner only has two acres and it's within an area that would qualify, they would not qualify because they only have the two acres. The town, for example, would specify that you need to have a minimum of four acres. So the owner already has, only has two acres, so they're under the four acre. So again, it's to promote, to keep open space. So looking at the same property owner that possibly would have four acre, one piece of property, four acres inside, and the criteria is that they need to have a minimum of four acres and it's a two-acre zone to qualify. That means you're preserving, they can't split that lot to then sell and redevelop. So it's preserving that additional two acres and that two-acre additional would be assessed for open space under that use on that reduced rate. And we can come up with some rate guidelines for that. So again, it's specifying where in town you want to open that up and minimum acreage, you know, lot size that a property owner would have to qualify. And then once they come to me, they have to come to the assessor. I look at the POCD, see on the chart, you know, is the, first of all, does the property fall in an area that is, has been approved to be an open space? That would be first. Second criteria, what's the size of their lot? Does it qualify? And then there's an application, we go through the process.
Thanks, Francine. That's really, that's great explanation. Sean, you got a question?
I did, and forgive me if I missed this. So once, once this would be granted, let's fast forward, do we have a policy and it comes in and it's approved? It's in perpetuity or the landlord can revoke it at any time and then develop it?
They can. And then once they, let's say someone filed this year.
Yep.
And there's a 10-year penalty period. So in five years, if they decide to sell it or, you know, change the use of it, they are then penalized. There's a ratio that we calculate the penalty on and then they would have to pay the penalty. And then that's placed on the land records. So anybody can see, you know, who's within that penalty period.
So walk me through, would that penalty be more than what the original property taxes would have been? Or less, or how does that work?
It's
Like, is it painful enough for them to do that?
We have, if the property is sold, then it's based on the selling price. So we have to take a look at the selling price. And then what's the ratio, what's the, you know, the assessment in comparison before? And after, there's a whole guideline to go through. So, so yes, it could be, so they need to really look at it. And I always tell them, please read, you know, the requirements because you are locked in for 10 years. So it can be substantial depending on the size of the property and how long they're, you know, they're in the penalty period. If they put it in and within two years, you know, they decide they're selling the property or they just want to get out. Yes, no, it, I have seen the penalty be a lot more than what the taxes would have been if they kept it as such. So it, there's, yeah, it depends.
All right, and then Mike, this is coming to us even though it's a land use matter because it's a policy of the town, or?
It's correct. So the Plan of Conservation Development identified on page 54 the need for investigating a policy for properties that could qualify under PA 490 filings.
All right, and then, so first of all, that's impressive as all hell that you know what page that's on. I assume you looked at it beforehand. If I asked you what page, it was on page 76, you might know as well, but we'll try that for another time. Give me a ballpark, and again, I know we're on TV and it's recorded, but I'm not going to hold you to this. I mean, are we talking about five parcels here that might end up here? Are we talking about 500? Because I, my initial reaction is a third of the town's already preserved open space through various easements, state lands, et cetera. So how much, how much are we talking about here versus the effort and town staff and costs that might go in where, again, it sounds like a good and noble cause, but if we're going to end up with one parcel here, is this worth the trip?
So I think it's going to depend on the criteria that we establish.
Okay.
How loose do we want to set it or how strict do we want to make that bar? Correct, Francine?
Exactly, so, and that's where this all comes in. Very important that we clarify set criterias if they are
But I mean, if we did the four acres or five acres, I mean, again, Mike, you know way better than I do, but there's not a ton of parcels left that might qualify for that, right?
That's correct. I mean, you got to remember, you're a pretty built-out town.
Yeah.
So, you know, they're already, some of these may have excess acres. But I mean, I'll defer to Francine on the specific situations.
And I, and that's where I would recommend to at least, you know, in the zones where it would be allowable, that it's at least double the size of the required home site. So if it's a one-acre home site requirement, that their lot be at least two acres.
Yeah, okay.
So, oh, go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, I'm trying to get an example. Because like when you're talking about assessing value of open space on people's lots, well, who has open space on their lots that's being assessed at a lower tax rate, right? Like, so if I had five acres, I guess, and three of it was farmland, you're saying my, whatever the qualification would be, I would be assessed lower because it's not like my full property value and I would pay less taxes?
Yes, exactly.
If it met all these conditions? And so the, so we don't get as much in taxes on anything that falls into this bucket. Whereas if I said I'm going to sell the property to somebody else, I want to sell it as five acres, not as farmland, I can make more money on it. Like, I know there's clauses, that's where, is that where you do this catch-up? I forgot what it was called, but there is a
This, yes, so we're not asking for requirements, yeah. So we're not asking for requirements for farm or forest, that's already
Okay, right, okay, so who, so who
But for open space, so
So I don't, I have five acres, do I have open space? Like, that's my land, it's not open space, right?
No, 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 you have to actually file an application for that. We currently do have some properties, like were mentioned, that going back several years where perhaps they thought that, you know, the guidelines were out there. They've been, we have about a dozen properties. Currently, anybody who has extra acreage than their required home site, it gets assessed as excess acreage. And that's what it should be assessed as if we do not have the PA 490 open space application, you know, and program, okay? So it does get assessed as a reduced rate. So taken for instance, again, the zone or neighborhood that has the requirements are one acre as a home site and someone has two acres, that additional acreage is assessed as a reduced rate, as excess acreage. If they were to subdivide that, that lot would then become a buildable home site and would be assessed as full, you know, home site value, which is a lot. So again, to preserve, you know, additional acreage, if that's what the town wants to do, and allow a homeowner to keep their excess property that could be buildable space, that's where this open space then comes in and they apply for it and they can get that reduced rate. As I mentioned, we do have some properties that currently have a use assessment in open space and that's where we need to clarify and get some guidelines as to do they really qualify? Can they remain there? Or should they be converted over to excess acreage as opposed to open space?
Okay, so, so regular acreage here, assessed acreage here for what you get taxed and then open space here. I mean, you can't see me or whoever, but it's a high, low.
Yes.
Yeah, so
Exactly.
So we, depending on how we do it, then we're going to lose grand list, right? So we have to obviously do that correctly. Sorry, I'm making a big deal about this, but it's, it sounds really complicated, it sounds a little tricky, so.
We don't currently have, we don't currently have, like I said, there's only like a dozen properties that we currently have right now that's being assessed under that statute, okay?
Okay.
But we want, if anybody else comes in and would like to apply, I need guidelines and I need some specifics, I need this to be approved, you know? And if it is approved, where in town, what's the acreage size minimum? Where, how are we going to be valuing them? 25% of excess acreage? Again, so I have examples that I can give or other guidelines to help out with the open space if that's what they're going to be looking for.
So, is the thought that we give this referral to our open space committee to come up with the exact guidelines?
That's the recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
My second question is, Francine, after we've come up with this, I know you said, you know, there might be a dozen or so properties that qualify right now, they, this will be recorded on the deed so that if somebody goes to look at that property, they can see that this has been recorded and that they have gotten perfect?
Okay. It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't get recorded on the deed, but on the land records, there is a list that's put out there and, you know, what their timing is, the penalty period and so on. So once the property, if someone, the property goes up for sale or whatever, then that clearly states if they're still within the penalty period or not.
In the land records but not on the deed?
No, it doesn't go on the deed.
Okay.
It's, a title searcher would always look at that, you know, once they're doing their title search. If, you know, Andy Smith, you know, has a property in PA 490, when they're doing the title search, you know, that name will come up. It'll show them, you know, other, you know, liens and so on that are on there. Not specifically a lien, but it's, it's close to that at some point.
Basically, this is, this is a short-term conservation easement is what this is, right? If I had to summarize what we're talking about. Whereas conservation easements are generally permanent, these are, these are short-term and can evolve as the property owners
It would, after the 10 years up, it remains if they want to keep it that way. They just don't get penalized if they sell it, but it will, it would stay. It doesn't run with the land. Once the property sells, a new owner would then have to reapply.
Gotcha.
It terminates at that point.
Perfect.
That's what I was getting at, yeah.
My last question is what happens to current properties that have this designation when the new policy comes out?
Well, that's where we need to clarify if they are going to continue in this requirement classification, do they qualify? So.
Francine, great explanation, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Is their motion effective January 25, 2021, to refer to the Open Space Committee's stewardship and policy work group, the development of proposed policy and criteria for PA 490 eligible properties in town?
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Mike moved, Jackie seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposed? That motion carries. Item E is tax refund requests. Is their motion effective is January 25, 2021, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $19,427.73 and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refund?
So moved.
Second.
I think Chris, Chris got it.
Get it back.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, any opposed? And that passes. We have several appointments and resignations. Is there a motion retroactive to January 11, 2021, to accept the resignation of Dana Alprick as a regular member of the Spirit Council?
I'll move that with our thanks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there a motion effective is January 25, 2021, to appoint Amika Chopra as a student representative, regular member of the Spirit Council with a term expiring on December 6, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I heard Sean in there, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Their motion effective is January 20, now it says 27th, but I'm wondering if that's, if it should be effective today, the 25th?
Yeah, the 27th is correct because Lauren will be resigning as of Wednesday.
Got it, all right, make sure. Your motion effective January 27, 2021, to accept the resignation of Lauren Miller as a regular member?
I'll move that with our thanks.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Wendy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion effective is January 27, 2021, to appoint Polly Rice as a regular member of the Library Board of Trustees with a term expiring on December 6, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion effective January 25, 2021, to reappoint Travis Schweitzer as a regular member of the Police Commission with a term expiring on January 1, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion effective January 25, 2021, to reappoint Gary Kevorkian as a regular member of the Board of Ethics with a term expiring January 1, 2025?
Moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our review of the minutes, is there any feedback on the minutes from our regular meeting on January 11? No, or the special meeting? Okay, well done on the minutes. Do we have any Selectman Liaison and Subcommittee reports?
We had, from the Board of Finance side, for those that weren't able to tune in, we had a, I think, a good discussion for finance surrounding capital and a willingness for them to explore how exactly we all manage, we being staff, you know, Maria and Amy and Melissa, Board of Ed, Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance together, whether we raise the debt ceiling, whether we, you know, keep it as is, whether we look at 15, 20-year bonds. I was really pleased to, again, to hear the willingness from them to find creative solutions. It doesn't mean we're going to go spend a bunch of extra money, but it does recognize what we all see on the CIP, right? That we've got Latimer Lane, we've got potential Henry James, we've got town projects, you know, all of which are, you know, thoughtful projects in their own right. And how do we manage through that, recognizing, you know, we don't have $150 million in debt capacity, just go chuck on the books? So there's going to have to be some hard decisions from our group, right? Because we ultimately decide what goes on to the Board of Finance for both the town and the Board of Education side. So not to put any pressure on anybody, but we, you know, we have to be thinking and asking a lot of questions about what do we do with the school that's coming down this year in addition to our other priorities? So plenty of time to talk about that at the budget. But again, I wanted to thank our Board of Finance friends for, I think, really doing a nice job of having a good discussion that we probably needed to have for a while on how we manage, you know, debt and capital in this town, so.
That's a good addition, Sean. I'll just add that the, typically, we have the Board of Ed capital discussion as part of our long budget meeting on Saturday. I think what we're looking at doing this year is peeling off that part and having that as part of a separate meeting, either a special meeting or or as part of one of our other regular meetings to make sure that discussion gets the due diligence that it needs. Because otherwise, it could be, run the risk of being short-changed in a long day. And I know there's going to be a lot of questions about, about their capital needs this year. Any other liaison reports?
I just had a, just a couple. Board of Ed meets tomorrow night, so I'm always two weeks behind. They are going to do the personnel budget tomorrow night. And I think they're going to look at the six-year capital plan also. And just the enrollment numbers that for distance learning, the elementary dropped a little bit from like October till now. They said Henry James has stayed the same, but the high school has gone up, I guess, because it's pretty easy to distance learning because you just go in and out of the classes that you want to take. And there was one more thing. Their policy committee, they were meeting, which is, again, now it's over, I'm sure. They're going to just talk around changes to Title IX. And that they're also looking to start talking about grants for the proposal of the, you know, the schools' upcoming capital work. So that's all.
Anything else? Was there anything under communication that anyone wanted?